Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Presiding over today's meeting, Chair Larry Coman.
Thank you. Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the February 17th, 2022 Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Chair Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bashertash.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Bowers.
Here.
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pretty pledge, a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a big crowd here tonight, so thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number three, Public Statements.
Thank you. The, hold on. The council recently adopted a resolution modifying the public statement portion of the agenda. That resolution separates public statements into two periods. There is a period for items listed on the meeting agenda excluding non-consent public hearing items, and there is a period for items not listed on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit. Twenty minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements for items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, twenty minutes total. Please be patient, this is a new process for all of us, so we're trying to see how this works out. So regarding agenda item Public Statements, does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? Remember, if you are here for non-consent public hearing items 6A through 6B, this is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. Does anybody wish to make a statement regarding agenda items? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name, and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Mel Atkinson, and I'm here to speak on the CUP application 21-0303. I've been a property owner downtown since 1990, which was way before being downtown was cool. And I also own the Crest Building, which is adjacent to this property that's being considered for a conditional use permit. And we're excited to have some new uses downtown. That building's been vacant for a long time and been in disrepair. But I did have some comments, and I talked to the planning staff, and they were gracious enough to include those recommendations in your package, specifically the landscaping issue that's been a problem for many years. And just in terms of history, in 1993, we entered into an agreement with the redevelopment agency, City of Bakersfield, to install and maintain landscaping on our portion of K Street, as did this property owner. They failed to do that, and the city failed to enforce it. So I'm happy to say that it looks like maybe we get another bite at that apple in terms of getting it replanted and properly maintained to maintain the character of the neighborhood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson.
Chair Coman, if I may, on this item, that's item 5K, Mr. Atkinson's comments were distributed for your commission in a memo that was prepared, distributed this morning. Also, just a quick note, there is an errant date on there. It's February 17th, 2021. That should be 2022.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a public statement regarding an agenda item? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name, and proceed. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name, and proceed. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item four, Consent Calendar Items.
Thank you. All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate consideration. Do any commissioners wish to withdraw an item for further discussion? May I get a motion to approve the consent items? I'm sorry?
Chair Coman, we're still on item four.
All right.
So it's just approval of the minutes.
Okay. Okay, so this is item number four. May I get a motion approving the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt.
Thank you. That was Commissioner Bowers. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
And Commissioner Biddle. I'm sorry? Okay. So I guess we're voting now? Are we voting? Thank you. You should have a voting screen on your screen there. Oh, you're waiting on me? All right. All right. How do we do?
Motion is approved with Commissioner Lomas abstaining and Commissioner Wade absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Agenda item number five, Consent Public Hearings.
Thank you. Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If an item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item for further discussion? These are items 5A through 5K. All right. You can take it off. Does any commissioner wish to remove a consent public hearing item for further discussion?
I'm confused. So the memo that we got, is that incorporated then? And is everyone in agreement? For K.
That would be for your commission to decide. The memo was provided with revisions or revision to one condition and the addition of one condition. If you vote on this item as a whole, you would be approving staff's recommendation with those revisions.
Has the applicant agreed to this?
It was provided to the applicant.
So I'd like to pull it off, please.
All right. We'll pull off item 5K for further discussion. At this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed, incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make a motion.
That was Commissioner Kater.
I'll second.
And Commissioner Bashertash, thank you. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Commissioner Wade absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number six, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Thank you. Just for the record, item 5K will move to the end of the non-consent public hearing items? All right. So it'll be heard after items 6A and 6B?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide your staff report on item 6A?
Yes, thank you. I would ask our associate planner, Tony Hockes, to come forward. He'll be presenting tonight.
I'm sorry, your name is Tony Hawkins?
Hockes.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Good evening. My name is Tony Hockes, Associate Planner with Development Services Department. I'm here to present item 6A, Vesting Tentative Track Map 7401. The project is located at the southwest corner of Brookshire Road and DeBaco Street in South Bakersfield. The request is to subdivide 2.25 acres into 12 lots for purposes of single-family residential development. The lots range in size from 6,036 square feet to 6,567 square feet, with the average lot size being 6,050 square feet. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the general plan land use designation for the project site. The area of Vesting Tentative Track Map 7401 was originally approved as a drill site for the surrounding residential tract. Vesting Tentative Track Map 7401 is proposed to be subdivided for single-family residential development because the applicant has submitted evidence as provided by the subdivision ordinance to remove the need for the drill site. Mineralite owners have been notified, and no comments have been received. Staff recommends approval of Vesting Tentative Track Map 7401. That concludes my presentation of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening. My name's Blaine Neptune. I'm with McIntosh &amp; Associates. I am in support of this project. I'm up here mainly to introduce myself. You guys probably are more used to seeing a familiar character that passed away unfortunately a year ago, Roger McIntosh. Our office is, you know, reeling from his death, but we're surviving and we're moving forward. I am the new president and CEO of McIntosh &amp; Associates. I just became final recently, so you're probably seeing more of me and my staff. So it's a pleasure to be here and introduce myself. And I would like to ask staff one thing to maybe... There's a new item, boilerplate item, that's, item 14, is the development of a maintenance district in association with a storm drain and a sump. I'm supportive of it, but I think it might be worthwhile to explain a little bit about what this is going to be going forward, because I have a feeling it's going to be on pretty much every staff report for subdivisions and commercial developments going forward, but it might be worthwhile for everyone to know what that is. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter, just a time to ask questions. Okay. I see Commissioner Kater moving around. Do you want to ask questions?
I'll go ahead.
Okay.
If the applicant would come back to the... Welcome. Can I get your name again?
Blaine Neptune.
Blaine Neptune. Mr. Neptune, you mentioned item 14 in the conditions of approval, and I was just wondering if you... Maybe a combination of staff in the city would care to describe the maintenance districts with regards to storm sump drainage?
Yeah, I'll speak to it. I think it's been long overdue. The City of Bakersfield Water Resources Department maintains the sumps. There's, I don't know, many, over 300 sumps within the city retention basins, and they're more used by... They're not properly maintained, and if you don't properly maintain them, they don't serve their purpose. They hold water. There's a measurable accumulation of silt in this town, and when it rains, the silt, your car gets dirty, but that all gets into the storm drain system, gets into the sump. And they just don't have the resources to do it. So this is a mechanism that the city came up with to, kind of like the landscape maintenance districts, to have a sump maintenance districts where there's going to be taxes associated with properties that's going to help the City of Bakersfield maintain the sumps, which is, you know, very much needed. You know, developers spend a lot of money to build these sumps. They spend a lot of money to mitigate the sumps to make sure they drain within seven days. And if they're not properly maintained, it doesn't serve that purpose. So it's relatively new. I think this is probably the first time it's been on a staff report and a condition, and it's long overdue. So I'm in support of it, but I thought it would be at least worthwhile to talk about and maybe have staff talk a little bit about it, too.
So basically, there's a condition from Water Resources. Like Blaine mentioned, this is an ongoing problem, maintaining those sumps, and they don't have enough resources to maintain. So moving forward, you'll be seeing that condition pretty much on site plans, track maps, parcel map, and coming to a district basically paying their proportionate share to maintain these future sumps.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Welcome.
Commissioner Bowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for staff. Are we... Is there upcoming workshop on these sumps?
We can have our Water Resources present a workshop on this, yes.
Any other commissioners have questions regarding this application? All right. Okay. So I guess I'll now close the public hearing items on this, the public hearing on this item, and return to the commission for comments and action. Are there any commissioners who want to make any motions, or...
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other commissioners wanting to provide comment on this action item, I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendations.
That was Commissioner Bowers making a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Biddle? Go ahead. Cast your votes, please. I'll just run a vote again. And please be patient here. We're adapting to new technology, and it's overwhelming us a little bit sometimes, so...
Motion is approved with Commissioner Wade absent.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us your staff report for item 6B?
Yes, thank you. In this case, I would like to ask Principal Planner Linda Mitchell to come forward.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Linda Mitchell.
Thank you, Linda.
Great to finally introduce myself to you. Been with the city for a few months, almost six months now. So, good evening, commissioners, chair, and members of the public. So the item I'm presenting tonight is item 6B. It is a request for a conditional use permit for an expansion of an existing recovery station located at 316 Kentucky Street. It's located in the M1 Light Industrial Zone as well as the Light Industrial Land Use Designation. So I do want to bring up that in 2018, conditional use was approved by the Board of Zoning Adjustment for a change of use of the existing office and storage and warehouse building for the recovery station. And with that approval, it limited the number of individuals or clients to a maximum number of 10. So tonight, the CUP that's before you, the applicant is asking to increase that number to 25. There are no additional expansions to the building footprint and no exterior improvements proposed. So what's presented before you, that the permit holder will continue to comply with the same conditions as the existing recovery station. I want to make that very clear. And staff hasn't received any comments for this project. Therefore, just to summarize it, staff, as noted in the staff report, staff is recommending that your commission approve this project because it meets the required findings and adopt the resolutions and approve the conditional use permit 22-006. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time. And the applicant is here tonight, and they have their own presentation for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Chair Coman, just wanted to clarify, did you open the hearing? I don't remember calling you.
I can. I do not know if I did. I can do that. I thought we opened all of them. I guess I probably skipped over that. Public hearing on this item is open, and is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the project? I apologize. Thank you for reminding me.
Good evening. Chairman Coman, members of the Planning Commission, city staff, thank you for consideration of this tonight. I am Stacy Kuhahara. I'm the Director of Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Our recovery station opened in June of 2020. This is a voluntary program for adults. We provide screening for people who come in looking to recover from substance use intoxication. We provide linkage referrals to services. This is a peer support-led program. It's open and operational 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it's currently operating in a capacity of 10. We're seeking to add 15 additional beds over five years to support ongoing growth for this service. I want to emphasize, the recovery station has a very specific and strict admission criteria. This is not a medical facility. We're not doing medical detox here. And so there's very specific exclusionary criteria, and in order to maintain that, there's a referral process with a limited number of people who can refer individuals into the recovery station in order to control those admissions and ensure that there are appropriate referrals moving through this facility. This is really just kind of a beautiful map that somebody made that kind of emphasizes what entities are able to bring individuals into the facility, and then also how we coordinate, because not all individuals are going to be appropriate to use our recovery station. We occasionally need to take individuals to the hospital. Other people need to use our psychiatric evaluation center. It might be appropriate for them to interact with law enforcement. Our recovery station services is really a safe sobering environment for anybody over 18, currently under the influence of alcohol, methamphetamine, marijuana, heroin, other opioids, other substances. There is screening and referral to ongoing substance use services, ongoing mental health services, and this is a peer support model. So it is, again, not a medical model. We've had good utilization of the facility since it's been open in 2020, recognizing we opened in the middle of the pandemic. In 2021, we're averaging about 180 individuals served there per month. And this isn't really visible, but there's a tremendous amount of tracking that we do, looking at where our referrals are coming from, who is actually bringing them in, people that we're having to redirect to other services, and then really tracking our discharges and our outcomes. How many people are we linking to services? How many people are returning several times? We monitor our data closely. We look at it on a monthly basis. The recovery station, this table demonstrates the staffing. I think as part of the original conditional use permit, it was agreed that we would have 24/7 security. That's been maintained, and there will be additional staffing provided if the conditional use permit is granted and we have increased capacity. So in conclusion, we're looking to increase our bed capacity to 25 eventually over a five-year period. I want to emphasize, this has been an incredibly meaningful resource for the community right now, especially as we're really increasing and trying to address services to homeless individuals. There's a number of people who are brought into the facility from the street. This is a service that benefits our emergency department, our law enforcement partners. An incredibly valuable resource for them to have to bring individuals who need this type of care. I've just included some pictures of the facility. This is the client entrance. I think it's not actually on the street. It's off to the side. It's just, it's a gorgeous facility. It's a very warm and welcoming place. Behind the wall there, the facility actually already has the capacity to make this expansion. The bays behind those chairs right there are empty. This would be a part of where additional beds would go to serve more individuals, and then people aren't always sleeping in the beds. They're often spending time in the chairs and other parts of the facility. Just really very nicely done. These are the beds that can be used, and there would be additional, several beds put in to increase our capacity. I don't think I'm pointing in the right place, or maybe... Oh, nope, now I'm going too fast. And it has a lot of amenities for... And it has a lot of amenities for individuals that we serve. They can come in, they can wash their clothes, they can have a light snack, it's, it's just a very welcoming environment. Thank you for your consideration tonight, I'll be available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers who would like to speak in favor of this project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, Chair and Commission members. I'm Jim Wheeler, I'm the Executive Director of Flood Ministries and we are the primary outreach agency for people experiencing homelessness in Bakersfield and Kern County. We have a great partnership with Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. With Stacy showed the chart up, we're one of the referring agencies to the recovering center and I, and our recovery station. I just want to emphasize how important this resource has been to those of us on the front lines dealing with homelessness. It takes pressure off the Bakersfield Police Department, a lot, other law enforcement agencies, code enforcement, so that they're not spending their time taking someone to, to jail for overnight. Instead, they can go to the recovery station and then they can get linked to the services that they need. So, I would encourage you to support the expansion of the recovery center, we need it. And I think it's a wonderful resource and I appreciate our county and Stacy and her team stepping up to the plate to provide this resource for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed. Seeing none, does any commissioner have any questions for the public? Remembering this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter, it's only the time to ask questions. And Commissioner Bowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe staff can answer this question or can have Ms. Carhar, did I get it correct, come up? I just had a couple of questions on the, the length of stay and then who makes the referrals, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers, through the chair. Let's see, we have very specific entities who can refer to the recovery station, that includes law enforcement, flood, the emergency rooms can, our mobile evaluation team, some of our internal Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services teams can, and I think that's it, actually. We don't take walk-ins, so they really do have to be kind of evaluated for appropriateness and vetted through any of those entities. Their, the average length of stay is about 12 hours. I think individuals who come in, use it to, to rest and recuperate and then, once they're awake and alert, then staff do try to engage them and talk to them about getting connected to ongoing services.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying. And with, with your stays, do you typically have any issues where you have to have law enforcement come out again because they get a little unruly or typically that they just come in detox?
We've, we have the, the operator of the facility, it's contracted out to recovery stations, I, Telecare, excuse me. Rochelle, would you mind coming in, helping me answer that?
Hello, my name is Rochelle Ramirez, I'm the Administrator of the recovery station with Telecare. Yes, we do, but it's, it's very infrequent. Most of the time, we're able to work with our clients. We, all of our staff are, we are trained in CPI, which is crisis communications, we're usually able to redirect folks. But every now and again, yes, we do have to.
So, so help enlighten and probably banish some of my ignorance. So, my understanding is, is that instead of taking a person to Kern County Jail Law Enforcement, this is, you know, mitigating piece, I guess, I guess. Instead of locking them up, they'll bring them to your, your facility and just let them sober up if they're on.
Yes, they can bring them to us and with also the benefit of having those recovery conversations with folks so that we could possibly get them linked to services.
No more questions, Mr. Chairman? Thank you so much.
Commissioner Kater?
Just two quick questions.
Don't go anywhere.
Yes, sorry, thank you. How many of these recovery stations exist in our county?
We currently have two. There's one in Delano and we have one in Bakersfield. The one in Delano is not well utilized and is currently in a stakeholder review process and is likely to close. So, Bakersfield will be the only facility that we're operating.
And then, is there, in, in looking at kind of best practices, is there a target number of beds per facility? Like, what's, what's kind of optimal in operations as far as size and scale for these facilities?
That's a really good question, I don't know that I could answer that. I will say that through the CALAME initiative, which is transforming kind of medicale services, they're really looking at recovery stations as an additional benefit that they're hoping each county will have. Not all counties operate and run recovery stations, and so I expect to see quite a few more being developed up and down the state in pockets where they don't already have them. I think the ideal capacity probably depends on the community and the community need. We have a psychiatric evaluation center here that is very well utilized. For us, the recovery station was essential because it, it provides a different type of facility and service that takes some of the pressure off of the psychiatric evaluation center. I think if we get to the point where we feel like capacity at the recovery station is maxing out, then we would have to consider how we might expand or what that would look like.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioners have any questions? I have, go anywhere. I always go last, so.
That's okay.
Alright. You, you're asking to add bed space, but, and I, you kind of went through that spreadsheet a little quickly. Are you turning away clients now?
I don't, they don't have to turn away clients, individuals who don't meet criteria to be there, let's say they're, they really need to be in the hospital or receive medical care, will get diverted to an emergency room or if they're in a mental health crisis, they're more appropriate to go to our psychiatric evaluation center. So, it, it, not operating at complete capacity where individuals, you know, who would benefit from that service have to be turned away. If that were the case, we have the psychiatric evaluation center as an option, so they're not just getting turned back onto the street, we have other facilities that they can go to.
And you said that this was for individuals that are 18 and older. What's the process for youth that are, do you know?
We, we don't have a service like this for youth specifically. I think if, if a, a young person under 18 came in, assuming that they were medically cleared, in that condition, they'd most likely go to the psychiatric evaluation center and get connected to services and substance use treatment from there.
And what's the reason that Delano's facility is not thriving? What is your expectation on that? I know it's a complicated thing, but.
I, I think there are probably many factors to that. This was funded as an innovation plan, which really, the intention of it is a pilot program to see if this service would take flight. It hasn't, even with the opening of the navigation center and some of their homeless outreach services, the, the utilization of that facility has been really low. Telecare, our operator out in that station, has done a wonderful job, really embedding into the community, doing a lot of outreach, trying to educate the community about the, the service being offered. It's just, the utilization is very low. In fairness, when we looked at opening a second recovery station, we didn't have a lot of data to determine where would be the best location to, to, to put one. We really picked Delano through, without having that backing data. And so, the fact that it, it hasn't been as successful there as we wanted it to be, it really was a pilot and a pilot program and the outcome of it, it just isn't, that the utilization isn't needed.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There's no rebuttal required, I suppose, so we can move on to, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comments and action. Do any commissioners have any comments or comments? Commissioner Bowers?
Well, thank you Stacy too, you and your team for your commitment and unwavering devotion to Kern County, especially mental health. I understand the complexities with respect to CALAME. They give you this much and want you to do this much. And so, I probably wouldn't shut down the Delano facility soon because with what's coming down the pipe with respect to CALAME, it's going to be a lot that they're going to be asking you to do. You know, I, I like projects like this because, you know, typically, I don't believe everyone should just, you know, be shipped and locked up typically. If there's a way to mitigate it because someone's intoxicated, I don't know if they need to go to the, the jail and taxpayers have to take that hit. So, I think some of the work that you're doing is noble and so, I'll leave my comments there, I'll park them and let my other commissioners comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. Commissioner Biddle?
Yes, definitely, being from the downtown community, it's, it's definitely a need and it's exciting to know that the city and the community is willing to work to really help those underprivileged people that may just need a little hand up. And it's definitely a place with a lot of dignity, looking inside the facility from the pictures, it's definitely something that we can be proud of. So, thank you for stepping up and taking care of some of these social issues that are plaguing all of California and the country at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Biddle. Commissioner Kater?
Yeah, just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I think as we look at complex issues, homelessness, substance abuse, mental health, it's such a complex puzzle and it's really exciting to see the different pieces that are being brought forth by the community, by government agencies, realizing that there's many different approaches to many different needs and I just, the photos you showed make me really happy with, like, I think Commissioner Biddle said it best, the dignity that you provide, people that come through your facility is very appreciated and yeah, just thank you for the presentation and thank you for making this commission more aware of the work that you're doing in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Kater. I would just like to comment, I wanted to thank you guys for what you're doing over there. You know, this has been a long time project coming, Rhonda Barnard was banging on doors years ago trying to get this thing done, so I'm glad to see it get completed, I'm glad to see it be successful. I, I echo Commissioner Bowers' comments about, you know, our preference not to shut Delano down right away because I think that, you know, it just might take a little longer. I think when the sheriff and the other people get used to diverting people there, instead of bringing them here, you know, maybe that will, that will change over there in Delano. But we really appreciate all that you're doing and this has been a great, great project and a great outcome. So, I think I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Bowers, wanted to say something else.
All I would add, Mr. Chairman, if no other commissioners want to chime in, I'm prepared to make a recommendation.
Chair Coleman, we need to close the hearing first.
Alrighty, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to Commissioner for comment. I thought I already did that. I already did that.
I missed it, sorry.
Okay, but you got it watching me because, you know, it wouldn't be unlikely for me to do it. Yeah, so, oh yeah, Ms. Loma said that we're one-on-one now, so. So, Commissioner Bowers had made a motion to approve item 6B and all staff's recommendations.
I'll make a second.
And Commissioner Kater, second? Please register your votes.
Motion is approved with Commissioner Wade absent.
Thank you. And good, thank you very much for the fine work you guys are doing out there. That brings us back to item 5K. Mr. Johnson, would you have, provide your staff report, please?
I will, thank you. This is a project downtown off 18th Street near Chester Avenue. It is a proposal for a banquet facility in an existing two-story office building. They'll be utilizing the first floor, they're limiting guests, self-limiting to 200. No food served on-site, operating hours are 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. The purpose of a conditional use permit is for staff to provide recommended conditions and for your commission to take public comments, information in the record. You amend those conditions, add conditions or remove conditions to your satisfaction making the findings for approval. A memo was prepared as noted earlier and that memo really addresses two items, to reaffirm that landscaping will be required and then a condition to address security. Within that, staff is recommending that your commission do two things. One, require that the security remain on-site 30 minutes after closing, and this is similar to, let's say, a bar or a restaurant who may have a bouncer, those bouncers don't leave at closing time, they remain on-site after closing time just to make sure everybody is removed. And the second, we are recommending that a condition be added that the permit holder make every reasonable effort to prevent admission of unruly individuals or if unruly individuals become that way on-site that they are removed at the permit holder's ability. That completes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed.
I'm here representing the tenant for this facility. We approve everything that the planning commission is, planning department is recommending, landscaping, security, all of the above. We're trying to take the proper process to get permits and make sure that this is a top-notch facility, that it will not be a nuisance to the community around Bakersfield. So, we're asking you to please approve this and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed.
Hello, my name is Leandro Lopez, I'm the applicant for this business, for the banquet facility. I've been almost 15 years in the business, with pictures, video, weddings, ingenieras and all that. I'm totally agree 100% with you guys, the place has a beautiful, it could have a really beautiful landscape for banquet facilities. At the same time, I agree, you know, I spoke to somebody for a security companies and all that, they require me one security for every 40 to 50 people. So, I'm gonna be, you know, I'm gonna make sure that we have everything continue and try to avoid any, any inconvenience or any problem because, you know, it's gonna be a business and the place, I think it has a lot of potential because the area is really nice, especially for downtown. I know there's a couple banquet facilities around downtown, but they don't have that kind of potential with the landscape or parking lot in the area. So, yeah, I'm gonna try to do the best I can and yeah, part of the project is gonna be fix the landscape. There's some sections that we're gonna be working down during the time, so we start getting going and for sure, the landscape and everything, security is gonna be provided. Thank you.
Now, thank you, Mr. Lopez. Now, thank you, Ms. Lopez. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter. It is only time to ask questions. Commissioner Kater, did you? Okay. Doesn't look like we have any questions here. I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Okay, we're a little confused, but it doesn't look like we have any questions at this time. There's no rebuttal required. I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comment and action. Commissioner Biddle.
This is exciting for downtown. I love that new businesses are wanting to come and invest in the heart of Bakersfield. And so to have new landscaping and have new faces down, we're excited to have you. So thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
There was a motion by Commissioner Biddle and a second by Commissioner Lomas. I want to say before we vote, Mr.?
Clarification.
Commissioner Kater would like to ask a question.
Do we need to amend the motion to include the landscape requirements put forth in the memo? Or can we just approve as is?
What you, I'm sorry, through the chair, what you see, Commissioner Kater, is actually portions of an existing condition that's already being recommended. So if you look at the draft resolution, there's a condition that that's already there.
So no additions needed to incorporate?
No, that's correct.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Mr. Atkinson for bringing up these points and having some discussion on it because I think that that was important. I know to some of the commissioners, that landscape, that building's been vacant for a while and like to see that cleaned up. So we have a, we have a motion and a second, so we're going to go ahead and vote.
Motion is approved with Commissioner Wade absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 7, communications.
Does staff have any communications?
Yes, I would note that the March 3 meeting is canceled, but we will have a special meeting on March 10. That is our general plan amendment window for your planning commission. So we would appreciate participation where possible. And then the March 17 meeting is also canceled. So only one meeting in March.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number eight, commission comments.
Do any commissioners have any comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number nine, adjournment.
There we go. Declare the meeting adjourned.